I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, immutable, liberty and justice for all.
All right, so we're going to do our remembrances right now for those who have passed away in the last few weeks. James Anthony, Robert Bob Connor Sr., Jorge Perez Hernandez, Sonia Nilo Nunez, and Sally Berger. Paul, do you need to give instructions for the people that are on Zoom as far as how to?
Yeah, right now, everyone is muted. If you would like, when we have the public participation, I will unmute everyone, but when we're done with that, you could either please mute, or I'll have to mute everyone again.
Okay, roll call, Mr. Briggs.
Present.
Cassie.
Here.
Paul.
Here.
Roger.
Here.
And I'm present. Phone exits noted are right behind me here. We won't use the elevator. Correspondents, we have none. Petitioners, this is the time for petitioners on the Zoom meeting to, if they have any kind of concerns for the town board, for the town in general, this is the time that you would come on and state your comments.
If anyone wants to make a comment, please unmute yourself.
Is Mark on there?
Yeah, Mark is on.
7:05.
Okay.
So, if they're muted.
There are so few people that have unmuted themselves.
Okay.
If no one has, as I said, if they want to make a comment, they need to unmute themselves.
All right, like Councilman Tesalino said, at that time, those petitioners offered the opportunity to speak. Since there is none, we're going to go to.
No, I want to speak. I wasn't, I'm on, Jackie Manella, I want to speak.
Okay, your name is?
Yes, I'm sorry, it's kind of breaking up, I couldn't hear you.
Okay.
Okay, I just, I wanted to speak on behalf of Camp Shuanggung. I know that there's some toss around about whether or not we're going to have camp this summer, or any even related activities during the winter as far as staff is concerned, or staff, there are staffing concerns. Number one, I do believe, just in working with the public, our public schoolchildren at the school, because I do work at the school, and I also am an employee of Camp Shuanggung, there definitely needs to be staff present at any activity that's involving the camp-aged children. They need to be supervised on the playground at school, so I don't, I don't know, you know, why they wouldn't need to be supervised anywhere else. For something to function properly and safely, there should be experienced staff that have worked with those kids, or worked with those kids in general. The second thing is going forward, I know that I've heard some buzz around about whether we're having camp or not having camp, and I just want to say, from my own personal experience, that we had no camp last year, you know, previous to that, no school, followed by no camp, followed by now, you know, no school again, and now we're kind of back to a staggered school schedule, and with the possibility of no camp going forward this summer. The kids have been basically isolated, and I see them, I see the ones that are there, I see them in the community. I know most all of the kids that are in camp. Again, I work at the school, so I do work with them on a daily basis. This is something I believe wholeheartedly in my soul that is very, very much needed for the community. I know that it's going to be difficult, I know it presents challenges, I know that we have guidelines that we have to follow, but our children of this community deserve better. They deserve for us to fight for them, to have a place to go where they can blow off some steam, because this situation is very difficult for a lot of them. Not only am I speaking of home situations that are difficult, that camp definitely helps relieve, but just in socialization, they're becoming extremely isolated, they're becoming extremely antisocial. Camp is something that I feel is a benefit to every kid that's enrolled, and I am, I am really, I'm going to be very disappointed as a person of the community if we don't find a way to go forward. So I think if everybody puts their heads together and following regulations of course and safety, I think we can find a way to make it work, and I really do think that that should be a top priority. And that's, that's my two cents for tonight. And I thank you for letting me speak.
Okay, can you state your name again, so we have it on the record?
Yes, I'm sorry, Jackie Manella.
Okay, thank you very much for your comments.
Thank you.
Any of the board members wanted to discuss anything on that?
No.
No, we'll take all that into consideration. Obviously, as you stated, we have to follow guidelines of the state, and we have every intention to do a great job, like we have in the past, for the Youth Commission. It's a big part of our budget, and it involves many children in the community. I believe the last time we had the summer program in 2019, we had 325 kids that were being serviced by our employees of, you know, the summer employees, which we actually hired about 70 children, you know, 16 and over to help with that program. So it is a very viable program, and it's much needed at this time. So thank you for your concerns.
Yes, and also should be adequately staffed. Again, I understand we're under some constraints, but they definitely need the staffing and supervision. That has to be paramount, because especially now, they haven't been together, and they haven't really been in that type of social situation for quite a while, especially the little ones. So they're definitely going to need the guidance from the adults.
Right, there are guidelines outside of the Town of Awarthing that are required for individual groups of people.
Yes.
A certain number of counselors or any type of positions that they hire have to be consistent with the number of children.
Absolutely.
So if that can be, that's one of the obstacles that we have to deal with, but that's what we're going to have to deal with, so.
Yes.
Thank you again, Jackie.
Yeah, thank you.
Is anybody else?
Yes, hello, this is Anna Mott.
Hello.
Hello, I wanted to know what the board's thoughts were surrounding a possible short-term rental law. I saw that was on the agenda for today's workshop.
Short-term rentals.
Yeah, we had it on the workshop, and we discussed it a little bit. We have a copy of the county short-term rental, and we have the copy of the villages, and we're looking into, you know, making, actually, we're actually in a moratorium on zoning, and from the May of 19 zoning laws that we passed, and we're revisiting that. Attorneys have stated after about a year, you should look at it, and we did look at it, and we're in the process now addressing some of the issues that were passed in 2019, as well as issues that are, you know, facing the community today, one of them being the short-term rentals, so. Thanks for bringing that up. We had a meeting yesterday, Roger and I, because we're two of the committee people that are on the revision committee, and that was brought up, so. Thanks for that comment. If anybody else wants to talk, you're going to get your time to talk under petitioners, and I'm not going to cut it off at this point. But by procedure, we have to have a public hearing, and we have our grant writer that's going to be on the meeting, so I have to go from the petitioners now to the public hearing, and if we want to go back to the petitioners, we can do that. So at this time, we're going to talk about, the purpose of the public hearing is to receive input and comments from the public regarding the Town of Awarthing's community development needs, and to discuss the possible submission of a community development grant, CDBG application for the 2020 program. We have Mark Blauer, who is going to be our grant writer, that is going to come on at this particular time. Mark, are you there?
Thank you, Supervisor. I think just in terms of a procedure, do you need to officially open the hearing with the roll call?
I'll have to open a public hearing.
Mr. Briggs makes the motion.
Second.
Roger, seconds, is all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Mark.
Thank you, Supervisor, I'll give a very short presentation. On December 29, the State Office of Community Renewal announced that they will again hold a funding competition for the U.S. Department of HUD Small Cities Community Development Block Grant Program. That is a program that provides grant funds to municipalities on a competitive basis. The activities that are allowed are typically water sewer, storm drainage, roadwork, things of that nature, things that a municipality may undertake. The key element is that anything we do must primarily benefit people of low or moderate income. In the past, we have qualified projects via income surveys in two particular neighborhoods, Napanok and Awarthing, apartment of Napanok and Karhongson. And last year, we applied for funding for the Karhongson Sewer District for INI remediation, which was approved in December of 2019. That project is now being designed. It's a $750,000 grant. The round that would normally have been due in July of 2020 was postponed, it was only opened in December. Applications are due March 5. The one major change is that the grant ceiling's been increased from $750,000 to $1 million. This may mean less grants being approved, but it also means that larger grants will be approved for those who are so fortunate. Any given year, about one-third of the applicants win, two-thirds lose. So it becomes imperative for us to pick a project that's both eligible and competitive. We have done a lot of water and sewer work for both districts. The purpose tonight is to give the public an opportunity to suggest projects. I'm going to suggest one for the board that is based on my experience and the experience of our engineer, Bernera Larios, makes good sense. As I understand it, the one remaining big need at the Karhongson Sewer Treatment Plant is replacing the failing reed beds. And that replacement would be via a mechanical sludge press that would work in all weather, and would save the town money, and would save the town on maintenance. And it would, in conjunction with other things already ongoing at the plant, including a $1.5 million USDA project to put a redundant treatment system in, will probably get the plant up and running in a very good way for the next 30 years without major expense. John Davidson, our engineer, thinks the project will come in around a million, maybe a little bit less, maybe a little more, but clearly, we're not looking at a lot of local money would have to go into this. So at this point, I'm going to suggest that the town board consider applying for the Karhongson Sewer Treatment Plant, in particular, the mechanical sludge press. However, this opportunity tonight is for anyone else to suggest other ideas, or to ask questions about this particular idea. And at this point, Supervisor, I suggest you open up the hearing to public comments. And I would ask anybody who has a comment to identify who they are so that our town clerk can put their name into the official minutes that we provide with the grant application. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Blauer. You've done a great job over the years in the water and sewer, and we're finishing up the water line project in Karhongson, if anybody doesn't know that. Ulster Health Construction's done a great job in Karhongson, and they just finished up the last part over the bridge by the firehouse between Wood Street and Mill Street. So in the springtime, that project, all the construction part of it is done, but in the springtime, all the cleanup of paving, or growing grass, or tidying up the area in that district will be done at that time. If you have any questions, you can call Town Hall to discuss it. If you hear this, or you're somebody that's on the call today, talks about it, just ask to call Town Hall. But at this particular time, I'd like to have the petitioners' opportunity to discuss what Mr. Blauer has just discussed. If there's anyone that wants to talk, as Mark Blauer says, you have to state your name to put it in the record, because that's actually the way that it happens when there's no Zoom meetings. So we have to comply with the regular procedures of meetings, whether they're Zoom, or whether they're in person.
If anyone wants to make any comments, please remember you need to unmute yourself.
Or just that they would state their name for the record, please, that they're there.
Anybody unmuting?
No one unmuting.
I'll move to close the public hearing.
Mr. Briggs makes the motion to close the public hearing, second?
Second.
Roger, seconds it, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Mark.
Thank you, Supervisor, thank you, Town Board, thank you, Jackie.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Thank you, Mark. Thank you, Mark.
Good night, Mark.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mark. We have a resolution, the town, oh, let's go back to.
Petitioners.
Petitioners, instead of going through with the rest of the agenda, we'll continue if anybody else wants to state their concerns to the town board in any shape or manner. Anything that you think is of interest through the town board, this is your time to talk. Okay, thank you very much. We're going to go to a resolution. Town Board, by resolution, authorizes the execution for the solicitation for a request for seal bids of the Awarthing Water District Treatment Plant and Wellfield identified as WWD-BID-06.
I'll move it.
Mr. Briggs makes the motion, Roger, seconds. It's a roll call vote.
Aye.
Mr. Briggs votes aye, Cassie?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Roger?
Aye.
And I vote aye, the motion is carried. The next resolution is the Town of Awarthing, by resolution, authorizes its intent to act as lead agency for the purpose of the seeker, and to declare a negative declaration of seeker for the State and Municipal Facilities Capital Program, or SAM, administered by the Dormitory Authority of New York State in the amount of $100,000 for the ONW Rail Trail in Port Ben section.
I'll move it.
Do I have a motion? Mr. Briggs makes the motion.
Second that.
Roger, seconds it, it's a roll call vote.
Aye.
TJ votes aye.
Aye.
Cassie votes aye.
I vote aye.
Paul votes aye, Roger votes?
Aye.
Aye, and I vote aye, and the motion is carried. Just to explain that, the $100,000 for the rail trail in the Port Ben section is a grant that was requested by the town board to the then-Senator Jen Metzger, and it took a while to get it, and it's going to take a little while to process it, but it's going to be used for the Port Ben section of the ONW rail trail. Okay, there are no on the agenda, there are no budget modifications. Town Board to approve bills as audited. The motion?
So move.
TJ makes the motion, Roger seconds it, all in favor?
Aye.
Town Board to accept the minutes of the January 7 organizational meeting, the January 7 regular and audit meeting, the January 12 budget workshop, the January 15 regular and audit meeting, the January 21 workshop meeting, the accept the minutes of the January 25 workshop meeting. Do I have a motion?
I'll make it.
Paul Tesalino makes the motion.
Second.
Cassie seconds it, all in favor?
Aye.
The motions are carried for numbers three through eight. Number nine, Town Board to rescind the motion made on January 25, approving James Montana Water Waste Water Maintenance Operator to attend a New York Rural Water Association Training Session entitled Labatory. Do I have a motion?
Move it.
TJ makes the motion.
Second.
Roger, seconds it, all in favor?
Aye.
That motion is carried. Town Board to approve the rehire of a partial list of seasonal youth commission staff. Approval in February responds to the Audit Action Plan that staff must be approved prior to working in the new year.
As needed.
As needed.
As needed, that's exactly right. So we have to add those last two words, as needed.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Paul makes the motion, and TJ seconds it, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion's accepted.
You're removing one individual, right?
Ms. Jolene Younger is the first one that's, at this point in time, is not one of the, she's not available and requesting to be possibly added at a later date.
Correct.
All righty, so thank you. Number 11, Town Board to approve the Ellonville Awarthing Youth Commission to hold a virtual event called Cup and Canvas by Heather, to be held February 26, 2021. The cost of the event is $5 per person. Maximum amount per family not to exceed $20.
I'd like to make the motion, and I'd also like to just explain it a little bit quickly. The intent is that that is going to be a virtual event that's going to be done via Zoom. The event is being publicized by the Ellonville Awarthing Youth Commission, and anyone who wants to participate in that, they should give Sam Bogner a call at Town Hall, because it is a by-registration-only event, because there is a limit for the number of people that can do this. Basically, the person that will be doing the event will be remote as well, but there'll be kits for any participants that, the kits will be available in Town Hall prior to the event. You'll be able to pick up the kits, and then you'll be able to participate in the event via a virtual Zoom meeting.
Okay, the motion's carried, right? Oh, no, Paul has made the motion, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Cassie seconds it, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion's carried. Number 12, Town Board to approve the Ellonville Awarthing Youth Commission to hold a snow tubing event at Joseph Steckler Memorial Park on February 6, this Saturday. The cost of the event is $10 per person. Participants will be responsible for their own transportation. Do I have a motion?
I'll make it.
Cassie makes the motion.
I'll second it.
TJ seconds it, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, that's a, that's a good event with the Youth Commission. I believe it's 4 o'clock to 6 o'clock on Saturday, Friday night. This afternoon, we talked to Paul Kraft, who's running the villages program. Friday night is from 6 o'clock to 8 o'clock. Saturday is 10, 10 o'clock in the morning to 12:30, 1 to 4. And then the towns, tubing will be from 4 to 6, and possibly later, if it's, from what I understand, we already have a large number of people that are interested. And then Sunday, the village again has it at 10 to 12:30, and 1 to 4.
Just another little bit of information on that also. The $10 cost per person is going to be, for the children, is going to be picked up by the Youth Commission. If any adults want to participate, the adults will pay the $10 charge, but the youth, the youth part of that will be paid for by the Youth Commission.
I believe five and under is free, right?
Yeah.
So five and under, it's free. Okay, that's, motion was carried. Town Board to approve a membership invoice in the amount of $75 for Renee Olzamek Sesser to be enrolled in the Ulster County Association dues for 2021.
Move.
Roger makes the motion. Cassie seconds it, all in favor?
Aye.
The motion's carried. Town Board to authorize the supervisor to execute change order number eight for contractual TWA 173 CDBG 1215 PW 37-13 for H. Ulster Hound Escavating to reduce the contract amount for a contract credit of $665,877.10 to reflect actual quantities installed to date, resulting in a revised contract amount of $3,611,704.22.
Move it.
I'll second it.
TJ makes the motion, Paul seconds it, all in favor?
Aye.
The motion is carried. Town Board to authorize the supervisor to execute change order number nine for contract TWA 173 CDBG 1215 PW 37-13 for H. Ulster Hound to increase the contract amount by $600,000 for the new water main via directional drilling between Mill Street and Wood Street, resulting in a revised contract amount of $4,211,704.22.
I'll move it.
TJ makes the motion, Roger seconds it, all in favor?
Aye.
Again, just to add a note, the Karhongson Water Line Project is now pretty much complete, it just has to have the cleanup in the springtime. We were doing very well with not digging out the asbestos-laden pipes that were there for 100 years, and so now, they have to, they had to complete the, the, the line through the creek down by Wood and Mill Street, and this is the reason for that, but it's actually, it came in as, as we expected it to, and didn't go over budget. So that's good. Town Board to approve payment application number 17 in the amount of $344,650.18 to H. Ulster Hound Escavating for the Karhongson Water District, replacement of water mains and appurtenances, Phase 3, contract TWA 173 CDBG 1215 PW 37-13.
Move it.
Mr. Briggs makes the motion, Roger seconds it, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion is carried. Town Board to authorize the supervisor to execute an agreement between the Town of Awarthing and Bernera Larios to perform engineering services for the Town of Awarthing's Karhongson Sewer District, sludge watering equipment for the CDBG 2020 grant application. The fee not to exceed $8,550. Cassie makes the motion.
Second.
Roger seconds it, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion is carried. Town Board to appoint Mary Lou Christiana as attorney for the Town of Awarthing Zoning Board of Appeals for the year of 2021.
I'll make the motion.
Paul makes the motion.
Second.
Roger seconds it, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion's carried. Town Board to appoint Mary Lou Christiana as attorney to the Town of Awarthing Planning Board for the year of 2021.
I'll move it.
Second.
TJ makes the motion, Roger seconds it, all in favor?
Aye.
That motion is carried. Mr. Paze is concerned. Mr. Paze says he's good. I think he did a pretty good job out there with the storm the other day, so we'll go from there to Mr. Briggs.
Just to echo your sentiments, Mr. Supervisor, kudos not only to Tony and his, and his crew, but county, state, village, you know, everybody. I know it may appear easy, as I said from people that we're just driving a plow, but it's not that easy, and it's, and it's long, and so, the job well done, and, and thank you. I know we had a few ambulance calls, and we were able to get out and get everywhere we had to go, so. They do more than just clear the roads, they make it safe for, for all, you know, fire EMS and police agencies, so I want to thank them for that. I also have something to add to the agenda, a motion to have the town board approve the emergency purchase of FLYGT NP 3102 sewage pump in the amount of $7,612 for the airport pump station from Fleet. So I move that as a motion.
Second.
TJ makes the motion, Roger seconds it, all in favor?
Aye.
That motion's carried.
And just one last thing, I know it may seem a distance away at this point in time, but in five months, it's July 4. I know they are working on the parade, and so that's just a little tidbit of levity that, with all the white stuff out there, and the cold, and all that other good stuff, just remember in five months, it'll be July 4. It'll be summertime and all the good stuff that goes with it, so. And some heat, we'd all appreciate that.
Get your sunscreen.
Yeah, but, so, never complain about the heat, because you could always have, but we had Monday, Sunday, Monday, Tuesday, so. That's it.
Roger Buckwald.
Just real quick, again, just iterating what Terry mentioned about the zoning code ordinance, we've been working on that diligently, and we're almost done, but it seems like every time we reach a new subject, five more doors open. So it's kind of a tedious task, but we are making headway. I would encourage anybody, whether you're an adult or a child, to go tubing this weekend. If you've never gone to Shuanggung and tubed or sledged, it's quite an event, and the best part about it It's quite an event and the best part about it is now you don't have to walk back up the hill. It used to be in the old days, you go down twice and you're done because you're exhausted from walking back up the hill. And now you don't have to do that. The stone to build brings you right back up. It's a fantastic run and definitely worth your while, no matter what your age. Definitely encourage it. Dress warm and go. And that's all I have.
Paul?
The only thing I'd like to make a comment on is I know that one of the petitioners commented about the, the youth commission and the Camp Schwangunkin. I, I think that you're going to find that the board is very much supportive of, you know, your concerns and your, and your thoughts on all of that. We obviously need to do it within the constraints that we have, but, you know, as you could hear from the items that we approved this evening, we are trying to get creative, we are trying to do some things. I, I know virtual school and virtual meetings are definitely, you know, not the same as in-person, but based around the, you know, the constraints we have, we are trying to do that. We're very sensitive to that and we hope to be able to, you know, get the camp back in full swing this summer, you know, conditions permitted. So that's all I have.
Kathy?
Yeah, so I'm excited to tell everybody that at the end of February, with the help and partnership with the village, we will be going out to bid with the New York Rising Stream grant money to remediate four sites. It will be site one, two, five, and eight, because those are the only ones that return all of their paperwork and we got easements for. If you have an outstanding easement for New York Rising Stream and you would like to get into the village this week, that would be wonderful and maybe we can add it to the bidding process. Can't stress enough that Site 10, I've been in contact with the, the different members in the village, I've been in contact with the owners of Site 10. I really wish they would sign their easements because it has been determined by the engineers that that is a loss of life site, meaning that if we gab a major flood, that we could lose community members in it.
You want to say where district or the zone 10 is? No?
No, I don't think that we'll do that, but they are aware of who they are. We've been in contact with them, the village has been in contact with them, the people doing New York Rising Stream, I've been in contact with them. They have their reasons, but I'm, I'm hoping they'll change apart because I would, I would hate for a tragedy to happen at Site 10 because they didn't let us remediate the stream. So the exciting part is we're going to go out to bid at the end, hopefully at the end of February and stay tuned and with the streams cleaned out, things will be a lot better and safer in the village and that's what I have tonight.
I think Kathy might want to mention again that once the, all this remediation is done, all the property will be clipped back.
Exactly.
As is, so whatever dug up, we clip back, be seeded, planted.
Yep, we seed, we replant.
Right.
They're really emphasizing that with all the homeowners, all the, not homeowners, rather, the property owners, that they will be made whole. If we mess up their yard, we will fix their yard. And it's really an important project and I, and I hope these families will, will allow us to do it.
Thank you, Kathy. So I'd like to thank Kathy for her involvement with the New York Rising. Lori, the board that used to work for Lori Centi, was the initiator of this project and this project has been going on for so long, I'm having a hard time remembering when it started, but it's really moving along and getting out to, out to bid as she said and that's a very big positive. I'd like to also thank, like Mr. Briggs has stated earlier, we'd like to thank the highway staff, the water and sewer staff, all the emergency personnel, essential workers that are working in our community, rescue squads, law enforcement, our local prisons, Ulster and Eastern Correctional Facilities, and those who live in the town of Orworsing that work at other facilities. They do, you know, they're essential employees, they have to be there every day and my hat's off to them. They do a great job. Let's see. I think Roger brought up the zoning. We're working again, hopefully in the next two to four weeks, we'll be done with that, I hope, and we'll be able to implement some of the improvements that we made in that, in that review of the zoning. So I'd like to thank everyone that came on the meeting tonight through the Zoom process to be participants in the process. Again, I would suggest in the beginning of the meeting that you should mute yourself because in the beginning of this meeting, as you may, if you came on early, you saw it was a little disorganized and if we could use the cooperation of everybody that comes on the meeting to mute themselves and come on when prompted by the board or by the Zoom administrator, Paul in this instance, would be doing that and giving direction to the community so we can have a nice meeting, all right, to get everybody's concerns listened to and the proper business of the town, you know, approved. So I'd like to have everybody wear your mask when you can't be away from people, you have to use your mask socially, if you can't social distance and be safe out there and good night. The motion to close the meeting?
Move it here.
TJ made the motion. Paul seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion is carried. Thank you.